In 2014 for the 2015 budget. Does everyone on the committee have a worksheet? Oh, we've got a pile of them, alright. I've got a set, so if you want even more than one, you are welcome. What we will find ourselves doing today, I think, is testing this worksheet. Our goals should be to get the worksheet filled out, to do the check-offs or the yeses and no's on various priorities. We should be double-checking all of the contracted city services, confirming adding or deleting. We should be going through the categories and deciding which ones we recommend for funding for next year, and then any particular details on those grants. And then before we finish, and we may need a new line on this form, I realized as I prepared for the meeting, we should be recommending to our colleagues a number. Either a single budget number to go into the 2015 budget, or we could have one for the contracted line items and one for the others. So, those are our goals today. There is a handout. Did everyone get by email the breakdown of the funding? A sheet that looks like this.
Yes.
Rochelle, did you get this one too?
Uh-uh. Oh, yes.
I really appreciate Brad and Rochelle's work on this. This sheet, I am hoping, will give us all the numbers we need for reference for today. If not, we've got a couple notebooks with all the grant applications. We should be able to find out whatever we need. I also have just one stack, I think, of some of the other funding sources in case we want to talk about, for instance, how much the county is putting into aging, or how much the city is also doing for utility assistance. Those sorts of things, I think, we are prepared with. Just to get us started on this worksheet, I kept some notes at the end of the last meeting about some ideas that committee members floated. And Nathan floated the idea of perhaps splitting of funding both emergency aid and preventive and counseling, and floated the possible ratio of 30% emergency aid and 70% preventive and counseling. In the email that you all got, just for reference, it turns out that, let's see if I've got this right, that the funding for 2014, it's already approved, was 25.33% from this chart, 25.33% emergency assistance, and 74.67% preventive and counseling. That was, you did request a definition. And the definition that we used, the two are at the bottom of the page. Emergency aid being programs which provide cash or cash equivalent to cover essential needs on an emergency or crisis basis. So, we need to agree to those definitions. For preventive and counseling, programs which provide services on an ongoing or as-needed basis to help at-risk individuals and families stabilize their lives and avoid or overcome emergencies. So, those definitions seem to describe what we're doing, all at risk, either for people that are in crisis or to prevent those crises from occurring. So, wanted to draw your attention to those numbers. As we went through the categories, there was interest on the part of, between the two of you on the committee, of funding each of the categories except language services. I had at least one vote for aging, one for medical, one for youth, one for food, clothing, housing, utility, mental health, and neighborhood. So, we can do whatever we want, but that's where we left off. And then Councilwoman De La Isla had suggested that we have a minimum grant of 10,000. So, I wanted to bring that forward for discussion. We did not get far enough to talk about the issue of core funding only versus providing any funding for new and untested programs. So, with that, we just need to bring that in for a landing.
If I may start? You okay with that?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. I think that, rather than us, one of the questions that I asked last week, or two weeks ago when we had our last meeting, was that, I think that everybody here agrees that we love all the nonprofits that are out there. That being said, we wanted to make sure that we had a point system that instead of the city having to go ahead and eliminate nonprofits for whatever reason, that we were able to have a scoring system that would allow then in turn for there to be a rating factor that would then leave nonprofits. Like, for example, the way that HUD does it is that you write your grant, and those grants that score 100% up to, you know, 90% are the grants that are competitive, and then they start doing the redistribution of, the distribution of those funds, and then anything that's left then starts going down in different tiers based on how much funding is available for those nonprofit organizations, which eliminates from us the horrible chore of us saying, "Okay, I want to give money to you, but not to you," because that's not the case. But it makes it more of a funding, of a properly-written grant that meets the questionnaire that we have established here. That being said, the only thing, instead of us talking about specific nonprofits, I think that Nathan started a great precedent with us talking about looking at how much we were funding last year, and the 75-25 looks like a great split, which was very close to what you had suggested. What I was thinking of is for us having the discussion of, do we want to be a nonprofit that is funding a large percentage, or as a city, do we want to fund a large percentage of the budget of these nonprofit organizations? Or do we want to have a cap that would make the nonprofit, that would show that the nonprofit is sustainable and that the services that are being rendered are sustainable with or without our funding, just in case there's an ebb and flow with the funds that the city has to distribute? Because that would simplify a lot more the task of scoring these grants, rather than focusing on the type of services that they provide, but how much percentage of it is us from their budget.
On the other side of that would be the issue that you raised of minimum grants, and on the other hand, if we're not funding a significant amount of what they're doing, maybe we're not important at all.
Correct.
Which would be the reverse, you know, the higher percentage, the better, probably think what I heard you saying.
No, because that means that if we're awarding $10,000, we want to make sure that if that $10,000 were to go away tomorrow, first of all, we're not making the executive director or the executive team spend the money that they're using to write the grant, to go when writing the grant. Second of all, it ensures that if they do not receive the funding, they're still going to be sustainable without our support, because the challenge that we have as a city is the fact that our funding comes from funds that we have available. Some years that pool is going to be a huge pool, some years that pool is going to go down. And we want to ensure that the organizations that are receiving our funds are going to be able to be sustainable whether we're around to provide those funds or not. So, what I'm saying is, let's make sure that we give a significant grant to these nonprofit organizations, but let's maybe make sure that we are not more than 40% of their budget, for example. That way, you're making sure that if something is happening and the city by next year does not have the funding to give that was the same amount as this year like we're having this year, they know that if the funds are not there, we still know as an organization that we're not going to be the organization that was responsible of knocking down a nonprofit.
Point counterpoint would be that we're trying to get this process early enough in the year that if the city council decides to make a major change, which they haven't in a long time, they've got plenty of time, so...
But I think that that's why we were going this direction, because the problem that the city staff has had is that after the city staff has been diligent and done their work with regards to the funding that they want to provide an organization, the council then has taken all of their work and said, "Nope, confetti, and I want to go ahead and fund certain organizations." But I think that as this committee, if we are starting to implement and outline certain priorities, that we want to make sure that these organizations are going to be sustainable, it gives a stronger stance to the city council that the work that the staff has done is valid, and that as a committee, we are vetting it, so that that doesn't happen again. Wishful thinking.
Well, I certainly understand where you're coming from. I don't know that, I don't know that I feel comfortable with our role deciding, you know, beyond the application process. If someone gets through the application process to the point that we deem this, you know, a worthy endeavor, and then we say, "Oh, we're 42% of your budget, so you're not a worthy endeavor anymore." I have a little bit of an issue with that. I'm not sure that's our role, and our role isn't necessarily to, you know, keep these organizations around in perpetuity. So, if we fund it one year and we don't fund it the next year and it goes away, that's not our role. I don't, I don't want to, I'm not sure we should be considering that effect.
But you see, that's the situation. What I'm saying is that if we are in the business of funding an organization, let's say, and I just threw 40% as an example, but if we are in the business of funding an organization and we are the majority of their budget, if something were to happen the next year, it's going to be very difficult for the city to be able to look at that organization and say, "I am not able to fund you." So, the question is more of a policy question, is are we going to be your organization that is making sure that you're still around, knowing that there may be a possibility that tomorrow we may not be there? Or are we going to be an organization that is going to provide for you funding that is not going to be critical for you to be open or not? So, it's making sure that, it goes back to the sustainability portion of an organization. Are you positioned in such a fashion that you are being fiscally responsible, that you are able to go ahead, and even though it's not going to be easy, you understand that we are not going to be your sole funder, we're not going to be your make it or break it, and that you're going to be looking for other funding sources, such in case where the situation that our funding next year has disappeared? Because what I want to save the council body from is from a nonprofit sitting there and saying, "If you disappear, if your funding disappears, our program is gone." No funder should have that much power over one organization. Unless it's a contract.
That was my, I was going to ask you about that, because we have chosen to contract with the, what we're calling the citywide contracted services, because it's a service that the city absolutely wants to see provided, and that probably is more than, I think it is more than 40% in some cases.
Correct, but that's different, because that's a service that we would have to be providing.
Just checking.
But if we're being a grantor, do we want to be in the position of being your make it or break it? And I think that that puts the council in a very difficult position when you're having to make determinations with regards to where the funding is coming from. And again, it takes away the power from the staff of being able to use that form, because then the argument becomes, "We don't want this organization to go under." That should never be the argument. That should never be our argument.
I'm trying to think fast. I mean, one of the things that we did was to set up the point system, so the point system itself would work, would work that. Does the organization have the resources to produce the outcomes, for instance, which is 10 points? Is the scope large enough to make a measurable impact? It might be that we're not the ones who are cutting funds, but maybe somebody else has, and they're coming to us to try and keep it going. We don't want to put an arbitrary, I'm trying to think out loud, arbitrary lock on the committee's decision on how to recommend. There might be a time when, whether because we've cut money back, or because somebody else did, that a group would say, "This is not viable."
But would the city still be your make it or break it, and the answer to that should always be no, unless I'm contacting with you to do a service? And it's just one of those situations that you just want to make sure that we are positioning our nonprofits for success, that we understand that the revenue streams that is coming from the city of Topeka are flexible, and they come and they go. And what this would do is that it would ensure that we would not be the sole or the majority funding. Like, for example, there's organizations that are not supposed to have Habitat for Humanity. We cannot have more than 30% HUD funding, or any government funding whatsoever as an organization. And it's because the government, and, you know, it's just typical, the government does not want to be your 100% sole source of funds, and you have to show that you have diversity in your pool of funds to ensure that you are a nonprofit that is able to sustain yourself, that in case if there's a funding change, that that funding organization is not putting money into an organization, that if one funding source disappears, the organization goes under. So, it's just having the mentality of, do we want to be the sole sustainer of a nonprofit, or do we want to be a support mechanism to these nonprofits?
Let me throw one thing back at you on that, and that would be, is that really our job, or is that the nonprofit's job to make sure they don't have all their proverbial legs in one basket?
It is my responsibility as a city councilwoman to ensure that every single dollar that the city receives is not gone to an organization that tomorrow is not going to be there by constituents.
Okay.
Because these are tax dollars. These are monies that we are being entrusted with giving, and all I'm saying is that as a policy, I want to ensure that the funding that we're giving to the nonprofits, which of course, we're trying to support these nonprofits, is not the sole place, that if something were to happen next year, that nonprofit that we invested money is gone, and then all of those services are gone.
Or they go get funded some other way.
And that's what we're ensuring with that, that they're able to.
I certainly understand the perspective. What I have, the way, where I disagree is that we're funding an annual program, and we look at these, and I think, I think part of the reason, you know, we've gone through this whole process, is that we don't want to just say, "Hey, they've been doing this for 10 years, we're going to give them the same amount of money for the next 10 years." And we should look at each individual organization, when they present their application, they tell us what they're going to do, you know, we verify that they've been able to do that, and, you know, that they have the resources to do that in the upcoming year with our funding. If they don't the year after, then that, then they don't get funded. It's not necessarily dependent on whether their primary source of funds comes from us or not, because we're not going to be, we're not going to be spending taxpayer money on them if something, you know, if we had a budget crisis and we were not able to fund them the following year, we don't fund them. That money is not being spent. The money is only being spent on the program that they're applying for, which would be the one-year period that they're applying for, the application year that they're applying for. So, I don't, I don't see the need to verify outside funding, well, I mean, beyond, beyond the scope of what's in the application process, that they have enough resources to do what they're saying they're, they're going to do, but to verify funding to the amount that, how much of their budget is from us, how much of it is from some other sources. As long as they can do what they say they're going to do, I'm okay with funding them for that year. I think if you add that criteria, that it has to be less than a certain percentage of their entire budget, we're making, we're making a difference that doesn't apply to the end result, because the end result is, I'm going to save 50 kids through this organization in this following year, and that's what we're funding. We're not funding, I'm going to say 50 kids in this organization through the following year, and I may not exist or not the year after that. That's for the next budget process, or for the next application process. Does that, does that make any sense? I'm doing the same thing, I'm kind of thinking out loud here. I don't think well, so...
You're doing fine.
Doing great.
You both are. I would think, if I'm, if I'm hearing you, what you're saying is, we're going to make a decision early in the year about whether we're going to fund this program.
Correct.
Then the city council's going to go through that process and affirm the amount of money, and we may have to go back and tweak it, but it's likely that people will have an idea what this committee has recommended. It will go to the council even in February, January or February, to make preliminary recommendation to the city manager. Then the application process will go, but people have an idea how much this council wanted to see in the budget very early in the year. And the, then the preliminary allocations will be made in June, is that right? If I'm remembering right, on the calendar. So, again, people will then, six months out, have an idea what their allocation is likely to be, and the council has to finish the budget and affirm that amount in September. That's a lot of notice, whether it's a small amount or a lot. And, you know, the issue is, again, whether we let the agency take that risk. They'll have a sense, we size them up like they size us up, and, you know, how volatile we're looking this year, and whether they need to go look for other money, or whether, whatever amount they have in mind, either in the past or what they're proposing looks manageable, and we kind of go through that process. I'm inclined, I'm inclined not to cap it. It sounds to me, though, if we can fill in one blank, that your proposal of a minimum grant of 10,000 had some...
I'm fine with that.
Had some, went over pretty well. Can we, is there a tentative agreement on that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
If we need to vote on it, I don't know if we need to.
I, I, I think, what I, I'm going to, I will try to go for consensus of the group unless we need to vote, and we'll just start to fill in these blanks. What I'm hearing then is a 10,000 minimum and no maximum.
Uh-uh.
None, or unspecified. Let's stay down in that, that area for a moment. Core funding for proven programs, I'm hearing definitely there would be support. Are you interested in, are there any comments regarding that? Are you interested in trying to carve out, set aside for new untested programs for next year or not?
My hesitation on that is, setting, setting that as a, as a goal, I'm not so sure I like. I like the, if somebody can come up with an application for an untested program that we think is worthy of being funded for the next year, then let's fund that. You know, I don't want to eliminate that, but I also don't want to say, "Oh, this is the best new program, so we have to give at least one new program funding," even though maybe it wouldn't meet the criteria otherwise. Does that make sense?
So, your suggestion would be that we check yes, that it would be open to new untested programs, but there would not be a set aside?
Correct.
That if somebody wanted to bring in something new, they're in the, in the mix with all the seasoned programs.
Correct.
Thoughts, more thoughts?
No, I just, I just go back to the percentage, because then that's where, again, a percentage of how much you're requesting of the city comes in handy, because if it's a brand-new program, you want to make sure that they have proven that they've been able to acquire funding from other sources before you go ahead and you release the funds to them.
But that's, we tried to work on that with score.
Yeah.
So, that everybody, understanding in part that there might be programs that have, that have been funded for years that have diminished over time in their effectiveness or something like that, and so we wanted that scoring to take care of the capacity administratively as well as programming.
Which, okay.
That's, that's exactly how I felt about it. I think, I agree with the sentiment, I just think that the place for that to apply is in the scoring card rather than in, in the priority segment.
So, should there be a comment, maybe it speaks for itself, but under the new untested program, the yes, that there, you know, just to point out that a new program would, would have to compete successfully against the seasoned programs?
Yes. I think that's a fair way to put it.
Okay. Pushing back up, we touched on the emergency aid and preventive and counseling a little bit, and the existing roughly 25-75 split. I would point out to you that we do fund, not in the grid that we have, but through our homeless prevention program, we do have another 20,000 in rent and deposit money that we give out. The rest of the roughly $108,000 through the homeless prevention programs, which are down here, where they're not part of this package, but there's, there's 108, do I have multiple copies of this? We don't, do we? It's 108,484 given out each year for homeless programs, and of that, 20,000 is rent and deposits, oh, more than that, I'm sorry. 20,000 goes to doorstep for rent and deposits, 20,000 to Salvation Army, and another 25,000 to community action for rent and utility assistance. So, a total of 65,000 of that is going to emergency aid, and the remainder, which is 33, 484, is, is prevention and counseling. We also are handing out, in terms of utility money again, the Roundup program, which is contributions that our water customers make, that then we pass through, $15,000, it's been as high as 25, goes through that program for utility assistance. We also voted recently to do 180,000 a year for utility rebate assistance. All of that's cash assistance, and so, just to be aware that that additional funding's going out for emergency aid, another, whatever that is, $245,000. So, that, that would substantially increase the amount of assistance on emergency, just cash total that we're doing. Still like the 25?
Well, I actually thought about that proposal a little bit over the last couple weeks, and I think while I like having it somewhere in there to, once again, set a specific number, might not be the best idea. Maybe do something like emergency age, aid be between 20 and 30%, and preventive and counseling between 70 and 80, which is about where we're at right now, right in the middle of that range. But that way, that way we keep, keep an idea that we don't want to become too much one or the other, but we also, we're not, you know, "Oh, they got 32 cents more, and so now we're at 26% rather than..."
The challenge of putting a range is that you put staff in a really difficult position to try to determine and read our minds as to where we want that percentage.
Well, I, I think what we do is we, we have staff go through, look at the applications, make their, their assessments and their allocations based on, you know, what's being requested, what they feel they qualify for, and if those numbers are outside of that range, only then would they have to go in and make adjustments to keep us within that range. I don't think it's actually going to be that much of a problem, but if we, if we put a specific number on it of 25%, then they are going to have to do that every year, no matter what, because we'll give them a total number, they'll cut that number, and they're going to have to... And they're going to have to divide that among the, you know, the various entities. So basically, the only time that staff would actually have to go in and do that would be if they fell outside of that ten percent range.
Madam Chairwoman A.
Yes.
Based on our conversation last time, in the process that we kind of established. While staff would kind of be doing an initial review of the applications, just to make sure that they meet threshold. Ultimately, it would be this body, this committee would be doing the actual scoring in that entire process. So I don't see that that would cause a great burden to staff above and beyond, you know, making sure they meet threshold. So to use Councilman Schmidt's example, you know, my suggestion would be if you did something, if you wanted to put a range in there. I would say plus or minus five percent or whatever to give, and let's just say the review committee in this instance, some flexibility as they review those applications.
So the compromise in a way would be rather than give a range, go ahead and pick a number, but give, give a, give a flexibility on it. Okay. And just, just for discussion purposes, the issue would be overall. Um, whether it's the role of government to do cash assistance. We know that not everybody's getting, you know, that our sources run out and this is just conversational. Um. You know, what role do we wanna see this city's dollars going in, more of prevention and and counseling and support? Or the, just the flat out cash assistance? Which is easier to raise money for elsewhere in the community? Does that, maybe one is not easier than the other? It's always a challenge, the nonprofits work real hard at that. We're doing, on on this side is medicine, emergency prescriptions as well as.
You see, and that's the part that I'm thinking, I mean, if we're really looking at our public safety and we don't have people taking care of their medical health. Um, and we don't have people that are taking their meds, if there's, you know, mental health. You end up putting a super high burden on the police department, going ahead and making calls that they shouldn't typically have to be taken care of. Just because of something that we could have as a city supported our public officers um in in helping. So that's where I, I pause because. I don't know, I see that because I see the other side um as a critical component. Um, of us ensuring that it's still funded. Um. And I know for a fact that if we were to introduce to council, um, I could, I could see a lot of division with regards to. You know, the funds that are going to families that don't have, especially with the utility services. And it's not gonna be a popular solution to present to the whole body yet. And and I'm speaking, you know, for other people that are not represented here.
Sure.
But I'm just taking a wild guess that this, this would not be something that will go smoothly with the body.
The council's pretty supportive.
Exactly.
And I, I throw that out because that's the conversation we're supposed to have here. And so I wanna make sure we have it.
Well, I understand you're not advocating either way, you're just discussion purposes.
Uh-huh.
And and I think that's, I think that's very fair. I think it's, there is a role. For us with things like um rent and utility assistance. It it doesn't, it shouldn't be a great role. But at the same time, we know that, you know, the costs of, of having homeless people on the street are greater. Than the costs of us, you know, providing rental assistance. Or the costs of families living with no heat when it gets to ten degrees outside are much greater than the cost of us. Kicking in fifty dollars for, you know, for rent to get them through December or January. And I, I think those are, I think those are important considerations. And that's why I'm pretty happy with the way we have this distributed to seventy-five, twenty-five. Where where twenty-five percent is, is for that purpose, is for emergencies. For people who who don't have anywhere else to turn at that time. And the other seventy-five percent is trying to prevent people from getting into that kind of situation.
And 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 I agree with you. The only thing that just comes to my mind is that typically when you're supporting somebody. On a regular basis and what you will find when you work with the nonprofits is that the people that are coming to get rent or utility assistance are people that are suffering from something much greater because they're repetitive. And they need the medical help.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, which again, I look at what's under emergency assistance and I see, um. You know, medical services in there and it makes me think, you know.
The only thing that's.
Do we wanna practice toxic charity and just give to the band-aid and not really try to support the, the root?
The way this is broken up right now is that the prescriptions through Project Health Access are under the. Emergency aid side. The other medical is all under preventive and counseling.
Okay.
So, I mean, both essential as you have described. That's, that's how they will classify. Since the medical visits, and that, that gets back to those definitions, so we wanna make sure all that hangs together. Because it's, they're both important, obviously, the old adage. Feed a man a fish and he'll eat for a day. Teach a man to fish and he'll eat for a lifetime.
Mm-hmm.
Both are important. Can't pay attention in class if you're hungry.
So I guess just to conclude.
So I have twenty-five, go ahead.
I was gonna say, just to conclude, I would endorse a twenty-five percent, seven, twenty-five seventy-five with a plus or minus five percent on that.
Solid number, good. Okay. Okay, that um takes care of sort of bookending some of the. Parameters for the categories. Let's get back into the um, the services that would be funded. And let's, we'll skip contracted for the moment. We have aging services. We currently, this year, we will fund forty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars to four different programs. Just for some context, county. Um, will fund five hundred and forty-one thousand dollars for aging services and has an advisory committee that works with them on that. That number actually is lower this year than it's been in the past. It's been over six hundred thousand. Um, for the last five years before this one.
He said we're at roughly forty-two K, right?
Forty-two K, mhm. So they're, they're funding most everything. We did have some issues where the people had been working with senior centers to make some changes in terms of. Um, transportation, looking at how many people were coming in for their attendance, things that we were largely out of the loop on. Have to say, just to, just to throw that out. Medical, we are at. A total of a hundred and ten thousand, four hundred, city assistance this year. Sixty thousand of that's prescriptions and fifty-four-four is services. Um. Someplace in here Jenny have a breakdown of United Way's actual grants. I think I did in one thing you gave us. A number of those agencies have United Way money. Yeah. Well, a little bit. At sixty-five. Seven, seventy-five thousand more in twenty thirteen United Way dollars. We don't have the fourteen breakouts yet, medical. Um. Youth services, we are funding. Hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six this year.
So youth services is where we have most of our funding. Because when you look at, aside from contracted services, um, you have close to forty thousand dollars going to aging, a hundred and thirty-eight going to youth. Forty thousand dollars going to food and clothing, a hundred and ten going to medical, forty-two, around forty-two for mental health. And you have fifteen thousand, so we have most of our funding going to youth.
Mm-hmm. And and that hundred and thirty-eight thousand, just for comparison, is, is part of. Two mil, two point two six million dollars worth of programming. It is still only about five percent. That looks to. Hundred and thirty-eight thousand out of two point two six. That's the math.
Yeah, the math ones.
Yeah.
That looks too low.
That's one percent.
Um, that's ten, one million, one percent is ten thousand dollars. So that's ten percent, that's five percent of that.
That's how was that, right? It's all, it's about five percent of all that funding. I've looked at the percent of program over here and it looked wrong.
Mm-hmm.
Some people struggle a little bit with those numbers, so did the best that we could. Um, you're right, mental health, neighborhood services, forty-one, forty-one fi- uh, seven fifty. Out of a total programming of seven hundred and thirty-two thousand. So. Again, eight, eight percent. And language service was the, just the one single program, a community action. That was not interested in funding language services in and of themselves last time, but it's still on the table.
Need a calculator, my phone is dying.
Pardon?
I work with numbers, I need a calculator, my phone is dying.
Oh.
Thank you. Thank you, that's what I use my phone for.
There you go.
Thank you, ma'am.
We can of course leave them all in. Part of our challenge was to look at what we thought was most important for city dollars. And also looking at whether, um. Based on where most of the money is coming from for certain programs or advising of the funding process, whether there were any of these categories. That, um.
I don't know what I did.
Don't hit the middle of the bottom. Whether there were. Some realignment, I guess, for lack of better term, is appropriate. We learned after we got into our process that some of the agencies that we fund got caught by other people later significantly. Um, really has affected some programming. So we can't always be ahead of it, no matter how hard we try.
My, my thoughts on, on the various categories that we went through, I think that was at the first meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Was that, I, I think they're all, they're all worthy categories. And. I, I would prefer a process where the application process determines what are the most worthy entities. And as long as they fit into these categories that we've defined. You know, that's where, that's where the money goes. Does that make sense, Brandon?
Well, just for, again, my brain works in numbers, um. It seems like we have, as a city for the last few years, allocated thirty-five percent of our resources over to youth. Ten percent and ten percent to food, clothing, housing and utility and also to aging services. Um, as well as mental health and neighborhood. Um, twenty-eight percent to what we consider medical services and seven percent to language. So. I think that right here we have, where we have put historically, um, the numbers of what we have considered priorities.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the one thing that I will say. I was just looking at, thinking out loud, I'm sorry, just medical services and mental health, I think that those are, one way or another, very tightly knit together. Um, maybe we could consolidate those two areas into one, um, because mental health services are medical services. Um, although they, they differ in the type of, of support that they're providing, I, I see why they're there.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and they're there also because of, if you look over, I think, there's been CDBG money, it's really neighborhood based. A lot of the support for the breakthrough programs because it's so important to keep people in the community and to keep them stable. It's a little different than.
So our, our two most important categories that just jump at you are youth services and medical services.
What was the percent you had on medical, please?
Twenty-eight.
Medical twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, thanks.
And just so you know, these are just rounded up.
Sure. You're, I wasn't fast enough to even try and keep up. Appreciate that.
Then everything else is just a ten percent base.
Mm-hmm.
And seven percent.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but most of our, our strength has gone directly into both medical and, and youth programs.
And youth, of course, is families. Focusing on the kids.
Correct, so, so the question is, and this is, you know, maybe not a popular thing to ask. But how feasible would it be for the city then to allocate a ten percent of the funding that it receives? To, so that the county could add that to their allocation of grants? That they're working on for the elderly. And that way there is still support for the elderly, but then it's almost like giving a boost to the money, the money that's already going out.
But we let them, let the county do the process?
Mm-hmm.
Hmm.
Because I mean, they're already funding most of it. And it's us just giving them the funds. You have a smile, it's just a question. I'm not saying that I'm pro or against it, I'm just saying if they have most of the funding, we could help with the funds. Because what I have heard is that the county has been working with this, uh, aging organizations for a while. To ensure that there's consolidation of services and lack of duplicity. And that's something that we're not doing.
Right.
So therefore, what I'm saying is if they're already working with you guys, you know, would it be adequate for us to go ahead and say, okay, here's an injection of money because we do wanna support elderly services? But it's almost like you guys have the market on this and you're already working hand on hand with these organizations. To make sure that there is no duplication of services, that these organizations are funded. And that way they only have to go through one application process instead of two grants.
My hesitation on that and. I'm not gonna say that the county would do this or that there's been any experience with this in the past. But I would worry that if we allocated fifty thousand dollars to the county and said, add this to your pool of aging services. Their pool of aging services would probably drop by fifty thousand.
Okay, okay. Yeah, we don't want that.
That would be my fear.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's not, that's not what I was after. Okay. Okay. Eternal sunshine of the spotless mind.
I thought that was a good idea.
I'm always thinking the best. Um, okay, no great.
Not that they would do that, just that, that's a possibility that I think we might wanna entertain.
Well, it is something that, though, along those lines to perhaps, and we've got the ability to annotate whatever we want here, that we would engage the advice of the Shawnee County Advocacy Council on the grant making for the seniors. I mean, get their feedback anyway. I do know that, I'm I'm sure everything was well intended, but no one really mentioned they were under the gun about transportation on their applications. We wouldn't have known.
Mm-hmm.
Some way to get that, and where you've got an advised program and people are coming together and sharing information through the year and so on.
But that's the challenge, it, we're, again, we're putting undue burden on staff. And what I want to ensure is that I am not only removing burden from staff, but I'm removing burden from the nonprofit organization in order for them to compete for the funds. I wanna make the process as simple as possible. Um, but the, what, great way to knock it out, that's, that was beautiful, um.
Well, somehow along the way, and we did not write it into the programming, but there ought to be at least some sort of briefing to that Economic and Community Development Committee when when it sits down to look at the grants in the spring. From what the trending is with United Way, what the trending is in the alcohol and drug grants, what the issues and trending are for aging grants, so that at least they're they're getting a briefing and getting brought reasonably up to speed on on the context that that they are making these decisions in. You know, we've chosen to have the council committee do it rather than, uh, a series of experts. It's been tough either way, anybody tried to do it, we all know that. But somehow to bring into the, into the mix, the kind of state of the art, even the trending about, you know, massive, you know, United Way realigning its priorities totally. And so knowing that that was gonna affect agencies in some way.
Well, just to keep on simplifying for the committee, sixty-three percent already is going to youth and medical. I mean, right now, would it be okay for us to say sixty-five percent of the funding go to youth and medical? Because it seems that those are the heaviest priorities for the city. And then that way we don't have to eliminate any of the nonprofits that are requesting the funds and then be based on the allocations and the grant applications, the scoring takes care of the rest. But at least we've told staff, we want to see the continuation of the trend of sixty-five percent of the funding that we're gonna allocate go to the two main categories, which are youth services and medical. Because that's what's happening right now. We're just, what we're doing is, again, what I'm trying to accomplish, and I think that we're all trying to accomplish, is ensuring that we narrow down so that it becomes easier of, okay, this is how much money we have to allocate, let me look at the grants, let's allocate the money that way to the nonprofit organizations. And then whatever's remaining, all of the other applications that come in, that score high enough to qualify for the funds, then are able to go ahead and get whatever, the remaining, the remaining, um, thirty-five percent.
So, just just for conversation, I mean, what, we talked a little bit last time about them either being in or out and letting the scoring take care of the rest. Um, but you're interested in putting, uh, in in bracketing or weighting these categories?
Well, we haven't done it, the, it's been, it's been already done for us. When you look at this, these are the two categories that are receiving the most funding. And obviously, if we historically have been giving the most funding to these groups, is because there's been the higher need for us to fund those. So what I'm saying is if we are in these two areas, um, and I think that there has been, on council, on numerous occasions, a huge pull for youth services. In addition to that, we've also talked about the huge need that we have in our community, um, for the ment- uh, the medical services. Then we go ahead and we say, okay, so sixty-five percent of this is earmarked for these two categories. There you have your number on how you're gonna allocate those funds. And then the rest of the organizations can apply for the remaining funds. There's gonna be years that there's gonna be a lot more dollars to allocate, there's gonna be years that there's not gonna be a lot of dollars to allocate. But at least the staff then knows how to divide the the pool. And it makes it even easier knowing that if if you're not gonna get ten thousand dollars, don't apply.
Well, I wanna toss it back in two ways. One is, what we have in front of us is what the council basically hasn't put a whole lot of thought into for the last five to ten years. They just kept redoing what they did before. And so, do we really wanna lock in those ratios prior to an outcomes-based, solid review that's based on the scoring and the caliber of the programs? I know that without naming any names, that that when you came in, you you had some thoughts that there were some programs that perhaps were not delivering the outcomes at the level that some others were. That could change the balance, um, between these categories, and maybe it would be okay to do that. Throw that out, one, and second, what if, again, we set up our scoring charts to look at at both the ability to deliver services, the the history of achieving outcomes on base, on the basis of what was needed by that, those clientele, and administrative capacity to manage? Um, what if another funding source came in too, that that was, would provide, that happens from time to time? You know, that would provide money, maybe just for youth services, or just for aging services, or just for programs like for girls on the run, let's say, and all of a sudden we've got another source for for a program, or a little pre- pool of programs in here. Um, we we aren't aware of that for next year, this is a year at a time, but do we really wanna lock it in? Or just say we're willing to fund these things?
Well, I have something that might be a compromise um, between those positions. And that is, I I think you're you're correct that we've established those two categories as being the primary focus. And I think there's, there's some relevance to that. It's also true that those categories have just been rubber stamped for many of the last few years. Instead of putting a cap at sixty-five percent, I would think, since it it is the clear intent of the past councils, that medical and youth services are a high priority. What if we put a minimum of fifty percent has to go to youth and medical services and not put a cap on it? So that, you know, if if we want to spend sixty-five or sixty-three or seventy percent on those, we can, but we can never get below fifty percent. So that, so that we maintain those two categories as the priority mission funding. Um, but we don't limit, we don't limit the ability of other categories to grow, at least to a certain extent. Does that make sense?
It does, I'm worrying a little bit because we already have a twenty-five and seventy-five percent and we're scoring. And at a certain point, we don't wanna strangle
Exactly.
ourselves with a a grid.
Yeah, um.
So.
Well, I would think the other alternative would be to say, you know, these are categories that we approve of and when they're going through the scoring sheet, which I have right here, where we go to, um, project consistent with city stated priorities, if if they don't meet one of those categories, they lose those fifteen points, which would, you know, probably eliminate them from consideration. So, we would just forward on these categories as the priorities without a number beside them.
Good point, appreciate you getting back to the, we did, we did create this balanced system.
And Madam Chair, if I may, kind of along those same lines, you know, one of the charges that, as we get through this process was for staff to kind of develop that kind of worksheet as to how you score these things.
That's right.
That's where I think we can pull that in, in that, okay, we've identified medical and youth services as the top priorities. Those are scored, you know, the fifteen percent, or fifteen points, excuse me. But then all the others, you haven't necessarily ruled them out yet. But those are your top priority categories. So getting it all to kind of play back into the scoring matrix that we talked about last time.
Brad, if I may, um, Madam Chair.
Thanks.
May I address him? Thank you. Um, do you feel, and I asked you this last time, do you feel that with everything that we've added to the questionnaire and the scoring criteria, that you have enough to make an educated guess on how to, not a a guess, but a, but an educated determination on how to allocate the funds that are going to be available? Or do you feel that we are missing something crucial for you to be able to accomplish that job?
Let me, let me ask you this question, in terms of us allocating the funds. It gets back to my earlier comment about the process in in that it's this committee. What exactly would you be looking for from staff in terms of that allocation?
That's, that staff would be able to, my question to, look, I maybe I didn't ask it correctly, I apologize. With the questionnaire that has been developed of scoring these grants, do you feel that there's a component missing? Or do you feel that the grants would automatically weed themselves out of those who would qualify for their grants or not qualify for their grants? And allow for staff to be able to allocate specifically based on people that meet that criteria without us having to go and say, no, you can't apply because you're in this group? Because the quality of the grant and the documentation should be enough to weed out the 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 grants that you don't think that would meet those standards.
Right. And and to that point, yeah, I mean, we have enough. But I I think it gets back to that very first point criteria about priorities. Ultimately, I think that's what this committee needs to establish is, what are our primary priorities? Everything else, especially with the scoring criteria and reworking the application to make it flow, I I think we get to that point where if it's not up to snuff, that's gonna weed itself out, if you will.
Mm-hmm.
And 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 if I can follow up, what we were really hoping to make sure we did was leave enough latitude so that the quality of the services ended up being the driver
Correct.
at the end of the day.
Correct.
Which the staff will help, if I can bridge this, by by annotating and setting the sub-levels on the scoring, um, as it was done before, to make it easier for people to be empirical about that scoring. At which point then, the staff will do that, but it will actually be the next committee that we're trying to set this system that will be the committee that scores.
Right.
And decides.
That, I, that's kind of along what, or along the the lines of the question that I had is, when we do this this scored worksheet, the way I envision the process going anyway, is that staff would preliminarily score the worksheet, present that to whatever committee exists at that time, obviously not as good-looking as this one. But whatever committee comes after us, uh, would then adjust those scores to their liking and their priorities, correct? So, okay.
So you, you, I don't know that I remember getting that far, but
Right.
we'd actually have the staff do a preliminary scoring for us?
We could, if that's your direction.